Good evening, the Oyster River School Board is now in session. We will begin with comments by visitors. Are there comments by visitors this evening?
I attended the deliberative session and something happened there that troubled me greatly and I want to bring it before the board's attention. And I've talked to Howard privately about this. An amendment was put forth or a change on one of the articles, Article Nine, by a board member acting as a private citizen, Ms. Starbranche. The problem that I perceived for the board was that the board's attorney did counsel with a private citizen, Ms. Starbranche, Ms. Starbranche, on the language of her amendment to Article Nine. And I see that a little bit of a conflict of interest because the attorney is the attorney for the board and for the district, not for private citizens. And reaching back in my memory, I asked some questions way back when where I said I would like to talk to the attorney on the right to know, and I was denied that because the board, excuse me, the school district superintendent felt that that was the attorney for the school district. And I saw a conflict of interest coming forth by the drafting of the amendment to Article Nine by Ms. Starbranche. The attorney gave advice that should not have been given, and I would like the board to look into it and talk to the attorney and maybe the attorney law firm in a sense that she was a representative of the school board only and the district, not private individuals. And I felt that it was way off base for her to give counsel to the individual. And I would like to see the school board act on that issue.
Thank you. Are there any further comments by visitors? Okay, comments by board members? David?
I have to respond to what Henry just said. Actually, if you're familiar with the way deliberative sessions work, that is very common practice. And in fact, the moderator instructed the person who made the amendment to go talk to the council to make sure that the amendment was testified. That's very common practice. I've seen it for almost every amendment that's been done at deliberative session. The attorney is at the meeting, particularly to counsel people on operation of the meeting, so I don't think there's anything to investigate.
And what I'd like to say is as school board clerk for eight years, I had been taking the recording secretary for consecutive years and on several occasions, people would stand and ask to amend, and the council would stand right up there at the table and suggest how they should write the amendments. So the council during the deliberative sessions is available to both private citizens and board members to determine how articles should be worded, the appropriateness of your wording. So that's been the practice I've seen.
Are there any other comments by board members this evening? Okay, so we're going to move on then to preliminary actions. Are there any announcements? Yes, we should announce that there will be a candidate's forum next Tuesday night, the nineteenth. It's to be held in the multipurpose room at the high school. That will be sponsored by the PTOs. It will be taped, but I don't believe it's being run live. And there is also a candidate's forum the next night, February twentieth, that's being sponsored by the Durham Taxpayers Association, and that will be also broadcast on DCAT. Anything else?
That one will be held.
That will be held in the Durham Town Council Room, I believe. Okay, correspondence? There were two pieces of correspondence in the backup. The first one was we received a letter from Senator Joseph Kenny regarding CACR 32, that is before the senate in Concord. And I don't know if board members have had a chance to read that letter. And I'm going to ask a question. We can decide at a future time if we want to weigh in on this, though we may need to find the schedule. But he does ask if board members have input that they would like to share. So that's just a question for our board to think about. Do we want to take a position or share our insight? And I won't say anymore about that. I think that might come up as David's sharing the delegate assembly. And then there was also a letter here from Kevin Quinn regarding an idea about a schedule change to calendar. I think this might be written by one of our students. I just noticed it says eight C at the top. And Kevin was proposing a schedule change, kind of interesting but somewhat dramatic schedule change, but the whole thought of having school vacation in the winter instead of summer. And he raised some interesting points as to why he'd like to see that. And I think it would be nice if there would be a board member who'd be willing perhaps to respond. I mean, there are a couple of things that we might want to just comment on that would be useful for him, interesting in knowing why schedules look the way they do. I don't know if there's someone who'd be willing to. Thank you, Kimberly. Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
I have some for you if you don't mind.
Yes.
I received a letter from Raymond Bauer, resident of Lee, and he was writing to commend us, well, in general, to commend our teachers for the quality of education his children received. And I called him to thank him for writing such a nice letter. I'm sure that the teachers mentioned greatly appreciate receiving his support and thoughts about the quality of education his children received. He asked me to please go ahead and share the letter with you, so I'm doing that.
Thank you. That's so nice. Any other correspondence? Okay, commendations? Stacy?
Well, this news is old, but I just, I liked the story so much that I saved it. There was an article in the Saturday, January nineteenth, Fosters. That's how long it's been since we've had a public meeting, so. And it was talking about a coordinated effort between the Oyster River High School PE class and Northeast Passage, which is a nonprofit organization at UNH that does adaptive programs. And they came and did a wheelchair basketball with several of the gymnasium, several of the PE classes. And I think it was really an excellent experience for the kids at school and very eye-opening. I was pleased to see that cross coordination between the high school and UNH. I think it's a great opportunity, and I just wanted to highlight that. Those, I like to highlight when those programs happen.
Right.
Because I think it's nice for the community to see that.
Okay. Could you put a little note on the top of that so that it could go to Colette, so Colette could send a note to let them know that you commended them at the board meeting and that collaboration? Kim?
I have two. The first one is that they're starting to fire up the Sugar Shack over at Moheramit, and there's a lot of work and effort that goes into that. And this year, there's a collaboration between the high school and Moheramit. The shop at the high school made new wooden numbers for all of the trees. And if anybody's familiar with the sugaring process, all the trees get numbered. Each teacher gets two or three trees for the parents to start slopping through the mud and snow and start checking the trees with the kids. And over the past few years, the numbers have been kind of falling apart and hard to read. Well, they got a new supply, thanks to the kids here at the high school, of engraved wooden plaque numbers, and they look wonderful. I had the privilege of seeing them the other day, and they're going to be hanging them up, actually, this week. They have a big kickoff this Friday. And then a second area to point out is Read Across America is kicking off. Massway is having a big kickoff next week, and then Moheramit will have events after February vacation. A lot of work and effort goes into that as well.
And I wanted to mention that commend Kim Seaman, our new outreach coordinator, and Maureen O'Day for putting together the first gap year fair. It was held last week on a somewhat sloppy rainy night, kind of like tonight, and yet I think they counted upwards of sixty-four people in attendance. They did that in coordination with City Year, so we had help from City Year. But it really was a wonderful evening. They had, I think, twenty-four different groups represented there, and I think it's a tradition that will continue to grow. And I think it was, kind of made you want to be graduating high, eighteen again, when you looked at some of the possibilities out there for kids. So it's a real nice addition, a service for our community, so.
I thought it was excellent. I think the people that came were really pleased.
Right.
With the students and some of the parents. Then I saw another parent yesterday, and she said she almost wished it was held during school time so that the whole student body could take advantage of it and really just see what those opportunities were.
Yeah.
It was an excellent.
That's an interesting idea. I mean, it might be worth just emailing Kim and saying, or even right after school so that could kind of.
Cross over, right.
Cross over, yeah.
It's just an excellent opportunity.
Yep. Great. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of January fifteenth? Kimberly? And seconded by anyone?
Second.
David. Okay, are there any additions, corrections? Nothing noted? All in favor? All in favor? And then we have minutes of the, let's see, of the sixteenth.
Come on.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Kimberly? Corrections, changes? All in favor? All in favor? And then I guess we also have the non-public minutes of the thirtieth. Is there a motion?
Come on.
Second.
Seconded by Kim Starbranche. Any changes or additions? All in favor? All in favor? Okay. And the manifest, do they still need signatures?
Nope.
Okay, so we're going to move on to board activity. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Well, we had a meeting, two meetings, January twenty-second. I wasn't able to attend, but we reviewed draft policies of GCSA and IJNBD, and we're bringing them forward for our first reading tonight. And draft policies on discrimination and harassment are coming before the board tonight for a second reading, so we'll cover those when we get to policy. And then on the sixth, we reviewed comments offered by Gerard Kayata regarding district computer use and security, and we sent this back to, we reviewed his comments, we're sending them back to administrators and teachers for further comment before we bring them forward.
Okay, thank you. David?
We also started the discussion on the advertising, sponsorships, collaboration stuff.
That's right. Well, are we going to have those in this packet? I thought maybe.
No, I think the conclusion was that that was, we would need to talk to the board and have a workshop, basically, to determine what the overall feeling of the board is on these policies.
That's right.
And we thought it was probably best to wait until the board reorganizes to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So soon after that, we should schedule a workshop and talk about.
How we're going to handle that.
A handful of policies are coming in.
There are four policies, four different policies with different wording that applies to that, so that's going to be a very interesting discussion.
I know we have a board retreat scheduled for, I don't remember what the date is for that. It's the twenty-sixth for new board, it's an orientation. So that's probably, okay, not the right form, unfortunately.
Don't scare people away by talking about policies and orientation.
Especially before anybody's volunteered for that committee. Okay, but that's good, so we'll put that actually on a future agenda, special meeting to discuss policy. Okay, any other committee meetings? Okay.
David's got one.
Oh, sorry, David.
For the Fields warrant article, it's not a committee meeting, but I went to the Moheramit Winter Carnival and put up the roadshow signs and boards and talked to maybe twenty or thirty different people who stopped by and asked about the Fields plans and the warrant article this year and the future. And then probably as many people walked by and read the sign. So it was a good day for that. Traffic seemed to be light for Winter Carnival that I remembered, but overall, it was a very good day.
Good. Thank you for doing that. Okay, our student rep isn't here, so we don't have a student senate report. We'll move on to see reviewing session one. And I think what the board needs to finalize this evening is our vote.
Recommendations.
Our recommendations on each of the warrant articles. I think we, David?
I believe this was put in the agenda in case one of the warrant articles got changed.
Right.
Since none of the ones that we had recommendations had any change, I think we need to re-vote.
Right, so. Warrant Article Nine was the only one that was changed, and the board did not take a position on that, so.
And we've been advised by council that we cannot take a position.
Right, right. So I think we're set. Yes, Kimberly?
The only thing I wanted to talk about was trying to get the word out more about warrant Article Three, the Fields proposal, and making, and looking perhaps at the calendar between now and March eleventh, if there are any opportunities to set up a roadshow that might be worth looking at, to get, to try to help educate and get the word out, because I think there's still a lot of confusion around that article.
Right.
If there are any PTO meetings or if there are any other venues that might be appropriate.
Well, I am going to be speaking at the Rotary Club on the twentieth. And I mean, they have very brief meetings. It's like a thirty-minute slot, and I'm sharing it with Kim Seaman, who's going to talk about the outreach, the internship program. So it's just enough to mention, I'm going to be talking a little bit about budget and warrants. So what I can do at that time is just let people there know that if they're, they have any sort of groups or forums where they think people would like to sit down and be able to have further discussion about that, to let me know so that, I mean, it's at least a contact so that we can have, invite further conversation. Were you planning, David, to do anything else?
I had looked at the calendar to see if there were other opportunities, and there just aren't that many. There's like a hobby night at Massway, I mean, it's a middle school, but I think that's a small event. There's a big week of vacation in there. There are a few PTO meetings, but at this point, they're probably booked in the past if you had to give at least a month, I thought, events notice for those.
Does, ORYA often has a signup night? I mean, my kids are a little bit older now, so I don't.
They're doing most of their signup online now.
They do it all by online, okay, so.
But it doesn't mean they wouldn't be willing to send out a notice or, I mean, even, even perhaps putting some notices in the weekly updates that go out and just, you know, if you have any questions about this article, here's what it is. You know, the weekly updates of the elementaries and middle school, they go out every Friday, and I know the publication deadline is typically Wednesday.
Right.
To get information to them. And we would have two opportunities.
So you would put that in and say if they have any, any questions to direct them to someone, I mean, Blaine?
I'm looking at Blaine. But yeah, I mean, just to say, here's what it is.
Keep it on people's.
Just keep, yes, exactly.
Keep it on the front burner.
Here's what it is, here's what the proposal is. If you have any questions, please let us know, just to kind of keep it on the radar. And there are two more opportunities to do that because vacation week is in there.
That's a great idea. We want to be really clear that we do not tell, ask people how to vote.
Right.
I mean, what you just said is perfect. If you have questions, here are some questions and answers that might help you be informed. That's, stop right there. That's perfect.
And I might also suggest putting something up at the website that's a little bit right there for people easier, because I was at the website the other day trying to find something, and it was really hard to find. And so maybe just a Q and A, easy thing.
Like a frequently asked question? I mean, it requires somebody to write that, to anticipate what those questions would be. Or do we already have that written? I mean, we maybe have it pretty much in the warrant article explanation?
We don't know. This year's warrant article, but we have one that we did a couple of years ago.
Tailor it. Work from, Howard?
I wonder, though, I mean, are people going to wonder then, why aren't all the other, why isn't there something about, question and answers about all the articles?
That's a good point.
Right.
I mean, is this the one that seems to be perhaps the most, generally the most questions? Or, I mean, would that be why you would do it? I mean, I think it's a good idea to inform people, believe me. I'm just wondering, so if someone's going to say, well, what about Article five?
Kimberly?
Well, I think the CIP article did raise some questions the other night as well, so perhaps a Q and A about a few of them would help. I mean, a couple of them aren't going to warrant any questions, really. But, you know, maybe perhaps just a small, or even uploading the PowerPoint presentations, and people could just click on those, because that does answer the questions within those presentations that are already in PowerPoint format, and people could open them up and read them.
If you put the PowerPoint and the visitor, the voter information, just have a link that goes to all that, that would be great.
Well, as it is, we are, we will be sending out the district report. Mm-hmm. That has the warrant with narrative explanations for all of that. So there's a flood of information that'll go out to the community. So maybe just in updates that go out, just a reminder of voting date and that the warrant can be found with explanation, you know? Right, yeah. Information about the warrants can be found at this link. Is that?
Makes sense.
Just in service of providing more information? Okay. So let's move on to the delegate assembly report. David and, was it David and Kim? Okay, I don't know how you want to talk about that, but go.
I'll take the lead on it, sure. Kim and I went to the New Hampshire School Board Association Annual Delegate Assembly. It was Saturday, January nineteenth in Concord, as usual. The morning was basically a workshop where they discussed two issues. The first was one that we got a letter about, which was the New Hampshire Retirement Fund for municipal employees is in a bit of crisis. Effectively, they have a, they call it Corpus, a large fund of money, and there's certain payments that go into it and certain benefits that come out, and basically the cash flow is not positive, or at least not positive, it's sufficient rate for them to sustain it. And basically, over the past, they tried to provide an additional medical benefit by setting aside a special account, taking contributors, employers' money, that is taxpayers' money, putting it into this account, and then offsetting it by another flow of money back into the main account. They recently got a lawyer's opinion that that flow back in was basically an accounting trick. They should, it violates IRS rules, so they've got to stop that. So they said, okay, we'll stop that, but they only stopped half of that. So the flow from the contributors, the employers, the municipalities into this special fund continues. The effect of that is, is in essence, that the rates charged to employers will go up significantly, based on this decision of the trust fund board. The position of the New Hampshire School Board Association, and I believe other organizations, is that this is effectively an unfunded mandate, because it is a significant amount of money. It's a hundred thousand, a hundred million dollars or so each year. It raises our rates by like forty-five percent. It's a big, a big chunk of money. They want to file a lawsuit based upon the New Hampshire Constitution that says there shall be no unfunded mandates, challenging this, especially not only for now, but the fund is being reorganized in many ways, and they're concerned that if this sets a precedent, then more and more burden will be placed on employers and taxpayers by that. So they sent us a letter saying how much they would like us to contribute. It's basically prorated to all the municipalities in the state. I believe it's three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars or something like that. So the morning was effectively spent on that. We then had a lobbyist from the New Hampshire School Board Association at the federal level come in and talk about efforts to reauthorize No Child Left Behind. And in a nutshell, what he said is that with all of the politics this year at the federal level, the efforts to reauthorize No Child Left Behind are falling behind. Odds are good, it's not going to get passed, but the effect of that is that the current rules, which are not only causing fifty, fifty-one percent of the schools in New Hampshire to be considered schools in need of improvement, and getting worse every year, it's only a matter of a couple of years before, we are also in that camp because they're heading toward a hundred percent coverage. That those, that basically that, that race to smash into the wall is in progress and will continue that way until the law is reauthorized. So they want to put a push on at the federal level to say, you know, don't wait until this political year is over to try and reauthorize this, because it will probably be, you know, the new administration comes in, reorganize priorities, two, maybe three years before this is looked at again. At that point, we're against the wall. So he made that case for us as well to act. And basically, it's, they want us to lobby our representatives to continue to reauthorize No Child Left Behind. So that was the two morning sessions. Yes?
What happens, so you're saying the law doesn't run out?
Doesn't run out.
It goes on forever?
No, I think it goes on for a few years. They were trying to reauthorize it early.
But I mean, if it doesn't get reauthorized, will it just expire?
There are a few more years, and I'm not sure if it's, do you know?
I don't.
No. I mean, I think it's like twenty-twelve was sort of the deadline, that they have to reauthorize it, if I remember correctly. So that's far enough away that, you know, there can be really crises happening if it's not dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For most of the business part of the assembly, it happened as the material we got beforehand described. I don't think there were, there was some discussion on some issues, but no votes were really taken different than what we had been authorized to take. There was an additional article presented, I believe, by London Dairy. Remember that? Somewhere in the southern tier, one of the dairies. Basically saying that they were part of a lawsuit, if you remember, that followed the Claremont lawsuits. So they were in a lawsuit. They got a judgment in their favor, and they're concerned now that the talk at the State House about amending the Constitution is trying to subvert the decision of the court in their favor as well as Claremont. And so they basically put forth an article saying that the New Hampshire School Board Association will not support constitutional amendments. Obviously, there was a considerable discussion on that issue. Kim and I talked about what position we would take, and we decided to support that article. And that article was supported by the New Hampshire School Board Association. To some extent, that was redundant to positions already taken by the School Board Association, which laid out, you know, we want fair taxes, we want full support for kids, you know, various things. This was just focused on a particular vehicle for establishing those goals, and we thought this was consistent with those other goals, so. That was the essence of the day. Was there anything else you can think of?
I think you articulated it very well, nailed just about everything.
It was, it was a good day. Good to see other school board members and what concerns they have.
David and Kim, was there a timeline for this request to join this lawsuit?
There wasn't a specific date that I can remember. They want to start the lawsuit soon. I mean, the money's coming, the request for the money is coming, so.
Well, it's come, right? We have, we have the request.
No, I mean, I mean, the.
Oh, oh, oh.
The legal process in terms, you know, the bills are struck and be collecting. And they're asking for, projecting a half million dollars of expenses to fight this because they expect a lot of people are going to fight in the other direction.
Did they say anything about what, I mean, I'm sure they've sought counsel as to what the chances are that this could be a successful lawsuit? Did they talk about that at all? I mean, what the risks were?
Not really. I mean, they talked about the risk of not challenging this on the basis of precedent. They didn't specifically say, I mean, obviously, I think they assumed that they have some chance of doing it, otherwise they wouldn't be wasting the money, but they didn't specifically address that issue.
Okay. Does the board, should we put this on a future agenda item? Maybe the next board meeting to discuss it?
Just to note, it does say in here, it doesn't give a deadline, but they do say that districts and municipalities, their meetings run March to May.
that districts and municipalities, their meetings run March to May, March and May. So I think they might be looking for, just guessing, they might be looking for funding within shortly after that, I think.
Okay.
When we discuss that, could we discuss the possible changes with, with that for future, sorry, for current employees within our system?
Right. What are the implications if, if we were to lose? What are the financial implications? Is that what you mean?
Right. And I'm wondering if I could maybe ask Blaine to kind of be prepared before we discuss it, so that we can maybe talk about it all at once. For instance, I know some people, not in New Hampshire, in Maine, one of Lorraine's friends is thinking of retiring this year, instead of two years from now, when she would normally retire, because of something that's going on.
David?
They talked about that a bit. Eventually, the, this special account that the money was taken into and then taken back out, that account was used, among other things, to fund a supplement for medical insurance. So basically, people who had retired could get three or four hundred dollars toward their medical insurance each year, out of this special fund. That's, that's basically what caused this flow to happen, so that that benefit could be provided. Because that flow was going really great in the boom times, now it's not boom times, so the flow's not going so great. This year, they have said, if you want to get into that special benefit, you have to retire by July first, I think it is, this year, to be eligible for that benefit. That benefit is not a guaranteed benefit. If the, if they run out of money, they may stop next year to provide that benefit. It's just, you know, this extra little thing they did on top of everything else. So what they've said many times is, if you, you know, try to retire this year so that you can get this, that fund's not that solvent. I wouldn't, you know, bet the farm on that.
Three to four hundred dollars a month or a year? It's gotta be a month.
Must be a month.
Okay. So that would be worth, I would think, some people needing to mull it over.
Yeah.
Well, and there's really two issues. There's the impact on the employee-
Right.
-but I think the other concern here is the impact on-
Taxpayers.
-the taxpayers, because-
Right.
-if they change this funding, it's, it could potentially cost our district in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right.
So we need that data, too.
Right.
But I, I, so the point is that that's somewhat independent of this lawsuit. I mean, the fund's in trouble. They're reorganizing the fund. This lawsuit is just, you know, which pocket do you go to take the money out of?
Mm-hmm.
And the taxpayers, the municipalities are saying, don't always go to the taxpayers. Let's spread this out a little more fairly.
Right. My thought was just that as an administration, we want to let our employees know that this is here, and how it might impact some of, some of our-
People.
Right. And maybe we already do that. I don't know.
But that impact is independent of the lawsuit.
Right.
It's just because the fund is in its sorry shape.
Right.
Right.
Well, thank you, and thank you for attending-
It was good.
-to representing the board. Okay, let's move on to policies. We have some policies in their second reading, and then also in their first.
I don't know if you want to go through the, well, to go through, I think, the second reading, to go through the second reading first.
Yep.
That's a policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity. Policy A, C, ACA, sexual harassment and harassment and sexual harassment of students. ACAAR, discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. Do I have two of those? Nope, there's two pages of that. ACAAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. ACABR, employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedure.
Is there a motion to adopt? Someone?
Second.
And seconded by David. Okay. Any discussion? David?
As I was reading through, there were a couple of typos that I thought we should correct. In both of the, the regulation ones, ACAAR and ACABR, were inconsistent in our capitalization of the word complaint. Some places, it's all cap, some places, no. I think we should just make it all lowercase, to make it consistent through that.
Lowercase on the, on-
Complaint.
The word complaint. Otherwise, it looks like some complaints are significant, and others are impacting, they shouldn't, we shouldn't just differentiate between uses of the word. I think that's all I had on the table.
Anything else?
Oh, on ACABR, in addition to the, complained about complaint, on page three of four, Item E, the last sentence should be struck. It shouldn't, the superintendent's decision shall be final. That should have been edited out when we added the school board phase.
Right.
And the next paragraph, two paragraphs should be Item F. They should be included in the outline form.
Oh, no. You're in the law.
Is that clear, Laura?
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, David. All in favor of policies as amended? All in favor. Okay.
Going to the first reading of employee computer internet use. This has been a fascinating topic. As technology's moving forward so quickly, I think that these policies will be continually evolving rapidly, and I think we'll hear more about them more constantly than others. Okay, so we have GCSA, employee computer and internet use. IJNDB, student computer and internet use. IJNDR, student computer use and internet use rules. And GS, GCSAR, employee computer and internet use rules.
I thought the, the two regulations in this case were just for our information.
So we really don't have to?
So we don't have to move on those. The others, I think, were, we were advised by council, because they're dictated by law that we had to pass on the regulation, but these are just for our information, to understand how the policies will be implemented.
So they will live in the policy manual, but not as-
Live in a regulation manual.
They'll live in a regulation manual, so they're not actually the policy. Okay.
And the advantage of that is that that way, administrators can change those without necessarily having to go on the board, if there's some small portion. I assume that they will keep us informed of regulation changes that are relevant, but...
And the reason for distinguishing is that this, these, this set of policies are not required by law? Is that what you're saying?
The regulations are not required by law.
But, but in terms of harassment, the regulations are, okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then we're really looking at just the two policies.
CCA, IJNDB.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept for, well, this is a first reading-
Recommend for a second reading.
Recommend for adoption. Kimberly?
Nope. Second.
Kimberly and Kim, okay. David?
On IJNDB, sort of in the middle, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, beginning, the district utilizes filtering technology, the last phrase of that sentence should be struck, because it's covered by the others. It says that the "and child pornography."
Pornography should be struck.
The reason that's, that should be struck is, it comes under obscene and harmful to minors, and this policy may be read by students in handbooks, and I don't think we should introduce the concept of child pornography in handbooks, if we don't need to.
And you're saying it is covered?
It's covered by obscene and harmful to minor materials.
Okay.
It doesn't need to be called out specially. We don't call it any other kinds of obscene and harmful materials. And we talked about that in committee, it just didn't make it through in the edits.
Kim? I had a question about paragraph six in that same policy, IJNDB. It says, "Students and parents shall be informed of this policy and the accompanying rules through handbooks, the district's website, and/or other means selected by the superintendent." And I know at the beginning of the year, parents are asked to sign a form, a computer use form. Does that, should that be specified here within the policy itself, that parents will, or is that the other means asked by the superintendent? I mean, should that be part of the policy, that parents will sign permission for their children to use the computer?
Well, you've chosen in this policy just to have it state that we will inform them.
I mean, it raises a question whether the board wants to make that a legal requirement on the superintendent.
Because, I mean, the impression I've always gotten is that, you know, you need to sign this, that you, as a parent, and you, as the child, have read the policies, that you understand them, and you're signing. And that's what it says when you sign. I have read the policies, I understand them. And then you send it back in, and that's when your child's allowed. It's almost contractual, huh?
Yeah. Yes, Howard.
I was thinking aloud, but it seems as if, it doesn't need to be in here that's required to have them sign off. It's kind of like a procedure, and it's already in place. It's very traditional to do this, at the beginning of the year, with the things that go home to parents and the student handbook, and, I mean, if you want to put it in here, I guess you can, but again, it's already something that we do, and I, I can't, I don't know why we would ever change that practice. I mean, I guess that by putting it in here, it assures that it won't happen, but we have parents, I mean, we're talking a lot now about how we're going to be allowing students to use computers in the school, personal computers, as well as employees. I, I'm not sure that you need it, but if you want to put it in there, that's obviously your business.
I just want to say, following regulation, here it says, "The building principal shall have the final authority to decide whether students' privileges will be limited, suspended, or revoked, based upon the circumstances of the particular case, the student's prior disciplinary record, and any other pertinent factors." And the other pertinent factors might be, you know, you've signed this paper, you know what the rules are, and you've crossed the line. So I think I'd like to leave it in the regulation, as it is.
You were just quoting from the regulation.
I was quoting the regulation directly.
We're in, we're in the regulations, is that clear?
It's, it is the third paragraph down in IJNDBR.
On the first page? On the first page?
Oh, okay, yes.
And as far as the, I think to your question, Kim, about what, whether it's binding on a parent or a student, I mean, regulations are binding as well. It's really a question of whether the board wants to impose that requirement on the, the administrators, or the administrators can act on their own to impose that on the students and parents. What I understand, Howard would be saying is, the administrators have done that, but again, it's really our, our decision, whether we feel so strongly about that, that we want to make that have the weight of law.
I mean, I do feel that it is stated pretty clearly here, but while we're reviewing it, is this the opportunity to have it go a little bit deeper, have it be a little bit more of a part of the policy? I, I believe it is covered, I believe it's pretty thorough. But again, just knowing that you do sign that piece of paper, whether or not it would help with the signing, whether or not it would enforce, I don't, I don't know how many of those don't get returned, I don't know how much of a problem it is. And I know there's a big paper chase at the beginning of every school year.
Right. I think in some ways, it's, you know, what the policy says now is that it is the school district's responsibility to inform. And in some ways, it is the parent's responsibility to put the signature on the form. Do you, do you know what I mean? So if we were to identify, you know, go a little bit further, it's almost like we're saying, and it's the school district's responsibility to make sure that they chase down, and every one of those has, has gotten in. I think, I, I think this, I think this is sufficient, particularly since we have that in place, and I think I would probably stop, you know, really think about, how do we describe what the responsibility of the school district is? So I think I'm comfortable with, with it as written.
And again, I'd like to mention that, I think that these internet and computer use policies will be evolving rapidly, and reviewed again and again, so it'll probably come up again, probably know for certain with the next couple of rounds, if we should put that wording in.
Let me just make sure, if I'm right about this, I, what we're talking about, I believe, is personal computers right now. Not to be confused.
Any computers.
And, no, computer use. Computer use, student, including district, the use of district computers. Joe?
Well, when you first brought that up, Kimberly, I kind of agreed with your thought, but after hearing that explanation, I guess I'm gonna go to the other side and say that I'm comfortable with the way it is right now, and just, should just leave it that way.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I just, again, it was an opportunity to say, do we go deeper? Do we, I mean, knowing that there is that paper chase, having been one of those teachers that had to remind the kids, turn that form in, turn that form in, you know, how, how much in writing does that need to be? Knowing the, the work that already takes place, collecting all those forms at the beginning of the year. And again, if somebody does not follow these policies and these rules, how easy is it for them to then say, well, I didn't, I never read the policy, I never turned my paper in? You know, how much enforcement is there there as well? And like you said, once these are in place, and we'll have some time to see that.
And I, David?
Essentially, the enforcement is between the adult supervising the students and the students, so that adult has the responsibility to make sure that every student who's using the computer has a signed form. And that's the matter, sort of who says you have to sign it. It's up to that teacher and the training of the teachers, or the volunteer, whoever, to make sure that that's enforced properly. That's, again, administrative issue, more so than anything else.
Stacy?
There's a discrepancy between the employee computer internet use and student computer internet use. In the paragraph that we're talking about, the students one, it says, "Students and parents shall be informed of this policy," and it should say, "And the accompanying," rules through the handbooks, the district's website, and on the employee computer use, it says, "Computer startup page." But that phrase is omitted from the student computer internet page. Do you see, those words are missing there?
I wonder if, does that, well, this, because we have Gerard having his hands on these policies directly, which isn't a terrific thing, maybe the, the employees do have a startup page to work from, and the students might not.
Okay. Blaine?
Yeah, actually, every morning, when an employee comes in to log on to their computer, there's a little dialogue box that comes up, they have to click on to say okay, that actually references this policy. So it's part of their login procedure every day.
But the students don't have to do that when they log on to a computer?
I don't believe so. I don't think that same dialogue box comes up.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't, oh, David? Well, I was curious about the bold, the sentence in bold, "At no time is an employee allowed to connect his or her personal computer or device to the district network." Could you give us a little description of that?
From what I understand, that's something that our network administrator recommended, be there in bold. The basic issue, as I understand it, is that when someone connects a personal computer through the network, if that computer is infected with a virus, that virus can then automatically spread to the other computers in the network and cause significant administrative burden. And I believe that's happened a few times, and that's one of the problems that they're trying to address with this policy change.
So this actually would demand a change in practice? I mean, it sounds like we have teachers who perhaps, you know, have a personal computer they work from in both, home, and they bring it in. So has this been discussed with faculty?
From what I remember from the policy, it's gone around like three or four times. We've been, we've been talking about this for probably six months.
Yes.
So I assume that faculty were included in that discussion.
And they're manageable away.
It's gone to all the administrators. I, I don't know if principals have sat down and gone over this with employees, but it's been, as it's been said, it's been discussed a lot over the last number of months.
Okay.
I can't tell you that this has been discussed at each, at each faculty.
Okay.
And so long as somebody's only using district computers on the district network, then everything with on, on that computer is information that belongs to the district.
Right.
So somebody can come in with their computer and take information about our district, about our students away. So we really can't have, and it's really hard to monitor that, to prevent that from coming off the network. So if we only have district computers attached to it, then every, all the information that could possibly out there belongs to us, and can be contained.
Well, unless you have one of those fancy little-
Right, flash drives.
Flash drives.
Well, that would be personal computer device.
Oh, so that covers that? So they're not allowed to use a flash drive? So how-
That's not happening. Everyone uses a flash drive.
Well, I mean, that's, I, I actually think that's a problem. If you're, I mean, it feels like you've created sort of a boundary between home and work that is potentially unrealistic. I mean, I'm sure you've had lots of discussions about this, but, so, I'm sorry, I'm just grappling with this idea for the first time, but David, yeah?
I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I've raised similar questions. What I do is I email stuff back and forth, if I'm working on a document. My guess is that some of the issues that are raised in this are going to cause feedback, as Kim noted. I think we'll see this policy again as it goes out, and people say, you know, that's, this needs to be softened, or that we need to have some procedure where people can connect. The example that keeps coming to my mind, if someone has a laptop where they've done some work, and they need to print it off, well, they're not connecting to the network, because the printers are all connected to the network. So, you know, I think there are going to be issues with that, but-
Well, I-
You need to sort of work through those.
Okay, I think actually this policy, if I'm looking now, I'm realizing, look at the first line of this paragraph. Employees are allowed to use their personal computers at school with pri-
we need to sort of work through those.
Okay, I think actually this policy, if I, I'm looking now, I'm realizing, look at the first line of this paragraph. "Employees are allowed to use their personal computers at school with prior authorization." That seems to be in direct conflict.
You can bring the computer in, but you can't connect to the network.
Oh, okay. So you can bring it and use it and print from it.
If you have like a PowerPoint presentation that you want to show your class.
I see, okay, but you cannot connect it to the network. Okay.
I have a question about how EdLine works, not knowing fully how it works. Is that, is EdLine connected to the network? I mean, are teachers able to go home with their laptops and do their grades, enter their grades through EdLine without connecting officially into the network?
It's web-based.
It's web-based, okay.
Okay, so. All right. David?
This is not an issue specific to our school district. My company has policies similar to this. I mean, they basically have a, a separate wireless network that we can connect our personal computers to that just is on the bad side of the firewall. And I, Kim has talked about connections that once your computer connects, it basically scans your hard drive, makes sure you have no malware on it. So there are various ways that companies are grappling with these same kinds of issues. It is a very hot topic. This is our attempt to solve it. And like I said, and Kim said, we're likely to be here again, you know, within a year as technology changes, as people get feedback to it.
Well, I can certainly see the problem if you, I mean, every time a network gets infected with a virus or it goes down, it, it really has a huge impact on the teaching and learning and the operation of the district, so.
And just one last thing to say is that, working in the technology industry, the most vulnerable networks are those in education. And it's primarily because we have young people who don't always use good judgment, who think they can get away with things. Trying, and they're much more technically savvy than we are and some of our administrators. So this will be something that will be constantly evolving, constantly watching. And I know the security software is getting better and better all the time.
Okay. Any further discussion, David?
A couple of recommendations on the regulations. This is again, some typos on IJNDBR. On item three, I'd recommend changing the word films to video. I just think that's a broader term. Films, to me implies, you know, which one is this? Item three on page two. Says violating copyrights. It says, "Including movies and music in films." I think video is probably more appropriate in broader term for use there. See that, Howard?
Question.
Find it, find it, three.
Press up the word films.
And video.
Input video. And then on item eight, it's not, it's not malicious us, it's malicious use. And then a, just a font change. At number nine, there's an S that's italicized on the first word of the second sentence.
Bold.
Yeah.
It's a bold comma, too.
Bold italicized.
It's italicized, yes. Yeah, but those are just for your information, since we're not voting on that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion then? All in favor? Stacy?
Yes.
We're all in favor. Thank you. Item G, Kimberly shared at our last board meeting a proposal. And so we're gonna take a minute to talk about that, or? You know, Kimberly, if you'd like to say anything, or if you just wanna?
Well, to recap, for people watching at home, I wrote a draft proposal at our last meeting for discussion tonight in regards to holding twice yearly community discussions on important topics. And again, this is simply a draft of a proposed idea to be discussed this evening, but among the ideas are that the topics would be chosen by citizens. The topics of choice would, could potentially be listed at the district website and people could express their interests through that means. Citizens would have the opportunity to vote for the topic within a reasonable timeframe. The meetings would be held on school grounds. The meetings would be attended by two school board members, a member of the district school administration, other topic-appropriate personnel. And citizens would confirm attendance at a topic forum to assure the topic forum will have sufficient space for discussion of the topic and attendance. And also, of course, so that we can have the appropriate personnel there in regards to the topic. You know, whether the hot, topic is homework, college prep process, communication, programs, curriculum, and how to meet the all means of students. Of course, that will differ depending on what administrative or faculty figure might be there. So it's just a idea to discuss this evening.
Thank you. Thoughts? David?
I think in general terms, I think the idea of having discussions in the community is, on subjects is good. It might make sense for us to sort of fold this into the goals setting since in a week or two, we'll have two other potentially new members that might want to weigh in on that and what our stuff is, so. I'd sort of recommend, I guess, that we table it for a couple of weeks and then roll, fold it into our goals thing, but this was sort of a procedural thing.
Kim?
Since I think one of the, the most successful things we've done while I was on, uh, three years I've been on the board is a feedback loop. And we've got so much information and made so many good decisions because of all the feedback we've received in new procedures. I think that this would be a, this is a good feedback opportunity. And when we do revisit it. I'd really like to see some of the first couple of things that the citizens want to see, discuss.
Joe?
I, I think it would be interesting to have one of the, one of the discussions, a citizen-led discussion, and the other one, an administration-led discussion. Just to allow the community to see that the administration is always thinking of new and better things. And that might be one way to, to kind of plant seeds and get ideas out there. And I guess, I'm an engineer and not an English person, but in my engineering schooling, the word "the," whenever you can cross it, is preferred. So I think we can cross the "the's" at the beginning of all those sentences, but.
Scratch me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, it looks good to me.
I also agree. I like, in, in theory, I like the idea of committing to ongoing discussions. I also agree that it should be connected to discussion of goals because I, I would worry a little bit about, I mean, I think we know, you know, as a board, you know, you spend time in the spring identifying goals, which it, it may just seem like this sort of discussion we have at the board level, but when the board identifies a goal, it really directs the leadership team and everyone down to kind of work in a certain direction. And so I think it would, this would be more powerful if, if we knew what the goals were and then we saw this as a vehicle for helping to support that and getting input from the community around those goals. You know, and clearly, I mean, I think some of the issues that you bring up here as possible topics, you know, would, would fit in there. So I would, the first one that says, "Topics will be chosen by citizens," I, I think ideally it would be useful if, if that was kind of negotiated where, once the board had established goals, maybe they generated, you thought about, you know, what kinds of issues might it be useful to have discussions with community members and generate a list that then goes out and then find the interest of communities, which I, community members, which I think at one point we, you had talked about that, so. I mean, I think there may be, you know, like you say, this is a draft, there may be a few ways to, to tweak it, but I, I would also agree that should, I mean, to me, it's sort of like a process piece. And so once you know what the what is, this is part of the answer of how. So I, I would like to see it maybe connected to the, to the goals. Stacy?
I have two questions. I like, I do like Joe's suggestion about having one administrative, administration-based and one community-based because I think that it gives a nice, sort of a, not spontaneous, but you know, a, an out-of-sink time for administration to talk about things that are going on and sort of a, a discussion about things that they might need input on. But it doesn't say here, and so I don't know, these meetings would not be limited in number, is that correct? So it would be open to anybody who wanted to come. We just would want to have people sign up so we would know that we're gonna have more than one person, or? Might be a librarian or auditorium or? People, so we could adjust accordingly.
Whether you need a conference room or an auditorium.
And so the appropriate personnel were also there.
Right. Yes, that's excellent.
David?
A couple of points. One possible example, you, you talked about using this to deal, as a vehicle for our goals. A potential goal that we've talked about in the policy committee is taking the various things we've pulled out of the policy related to the values of the district. And we need to now come up with sort of a richer statement of values for the district. I would like to see that as a goal for, from the school board next time. And that would be an excellent thing to have community do discussions on, you know, to better understand the, the values of the community as it rolls into that. So that's the first point. The second point is another possible way of doing this, as opposed to having, you know, a presentation by administrators and a presentation by citizens. If you remember the Citizens Voice Project a few years ago? They, they used a format that I've also seen done at some Mahomet PTO education committees, which basically you have, have a meeting where you sort of talk about the topic in general. You break up into smaller groups that then sort of brainstorm the idea, have some smaller discussions, and then you get back together and sort of talk about what you talked about to reunite the group. I thought that those discussions were a good way of dealing with, you know, potentially large number of people, but still having reasonably intimate discussions where you can really have some give and take on the issue, but then bringing it back. I thought both of those cases were very good. And it's not so much a presentation as it is just more of a discussion that happens, but. So that's just another possible vehicle, form.
Kim?
And this is really just a, an idea I'm throwing out there, but that is, if you, if this is going to become a regular process, we might want to take a look at what a, a report might look like. You know, maybe, you know, a synopsis, the findings, expectations, next steps. Some type of standard setup so people can always pick up a, a report from the district and understand what our processes are and where we're going with them. Because with this format, it's wonderful that it's really spontaneous, but I think that having organized output is important, too.
Oh, do you mean, i- if the board wants to adopt this, that maybe we might say, well, here's what the purpose, state the goals and the purpose, here's how the format will be, here will be what the outcome, to put it in? Okay. So, Kimberly?
And, you know, having this around the goals, one of the things that prompted this was the fact that this year's goal had to do with feedback, had to do, and, and Howard's been going to all the PTO meetings and getting a lot of feedback. And so the idea of perhaps having one of these community forums prior to our goal-setting for next time, I think might be interesting because it could piggyback on what Howard's already been doing, gathering a lot of information from all the groups and all the school, schools that he's been visiting. And then having some community members get together and discuss that outcome, discuss. So that would help us in setting next year's goals, instead of waiting until we've set next year's goals. I think it might be helpful to do this prior to that goal-setting.
So would you say that that forum would be an opportu, a time where Howard, I mean, I don't know if I heard you say this, but Howard reporting out what he heard and then discussion ensuing around this whole topic of the
To follow on what, yeah, to follow on what Joe said, one citizen-led, the fall one perhaps could be one that's more citizen-led. And the spring one could be one that's administrative-led. And it could begin with Howard letting us know what he's discovered on his tours of all the PTOs and the schools. And that could begin this conversation. And I absolutely agree, there should be some end product that is created, a standard setup, and, you know, I'd be happy to work on that as well. Just, I think, very clean, simple. Here's what talked about, here's who was intent, you know, that we can report back.
Rubrics.
Exactly.
A rubric.
Very simple.
I like the idea of having Howard report in the spring because I think it, especially coming off the election cycle with, excuse me, new school board, that it's a nice way to start off, sort of what he's heard, where, where we're gonna start for next, you know, our new, our new cycle, so. Plus, I'd like to know what he heard.
But, but the recommendation would be that we would move that report from a board meeting to a special meeting? Right, or a special forum that would be?
Or do it twice.
Or do it twice, maybe reports at the board, but then also. Okay, well, that's a lot of good things to think about. Should we, I mean, probably, I mean, just thinking about what's gonna happen, you know, there'll be a new board, the new board members will be seated on middle of March. Then there's a board orientation the end of March. I know Howard's actually still, I mean, one of his ideas was that we might have the admin, one that's directed more by administration. Should we make a note to have this come back on the agenda early spring before we get into goal-setting? Does that make sense? Okay, all right, so I'll make a note on that and community forums, yeah.
What day was that board retreat again?
It's a Wednesday, and I think it's the twenty-sixth. It's, it's the twenty-sixth.
At seven thirty at night, I believe.
Yes, I have it right here.
Twenty-sixth at seven thirty PM. Okay.
It's at the SAU?
And that's at the SAU, yeah. Okay, thank you, Kimberly. I want to add one item under board activity. There's, there've been a number of questions, well, in some ways, a similar question that's been raised in a number of different formats. Most recently, I think I saw it come through in the, the commu, a community commentary that was published in Foster's, I think it was last week. Questions that have to do with trying to understand how it is that our budget has grown so expen, exponentially in the last ten years. And I mean, I've heard the question posed here at board meetings, I've heard the question out in the community, and then there it was again, in, in the, in the newspaper. And so obviously, that's a big, there's a lot of complicated reasons for that, but I thought that it might be wise for us as a board to just try to prevent, present some data that just kind of gives a picture of it. It's certainly not gonna be a comprehensive answer. But, and let me see, so Howard and I met and just talked about what are some of the, the data points that might be revealing, that might help people to understand this. And we were talking, for instance, about, I, I'd like to just list these and what I'm really actually gonna, asking the board is if the board is in agreement that it would be useful to put together some of this data in a, just a brief list-like form and to make it available on our website, perhaps in, in a letter to Foster's to just say, "For those of you who are interested in trying to understand this, here's some of the data that might give you a little window into it." So I'd like to ask if the board is in favor of doing that. And, and if so, these, this is sort of a list of what I see as helpful data. Health insurance costs, maybe just seeing how they've changed over the last ten years. The district's contribution to state retirement. The percentage of children receiving special ed services. The cost of out-of-district placements. The changes in utility costs. The number of positions that have been added to the district and for what reason. I mean, clearly, those were, there were some that came in when class size guidelines changed, but then there've been other discretionary positions that were put in, like the reading specialist. And, you know, just sort of a list of that. Technology, you know, when we talk about ten years, it's, I think, you're, did you present technologies?
Yes.
You showed that old-fashioned, I mean, you realize, I don't think ten years ago, the state was keeping student computer ratios, and suddenly they are now, so. Maybe looking at our debt service. So, I mean, I think those were, those are kind of the key areas. And again, it's not a, a total comprehensive look, and that's pretty hard to do in a short format, but some of that data might be useful to people who are trying to, just scratching their head and trying to figure that out. So, David?
Two additional ones, not just utility costs, but fuel, particularly transportation.
Right.
Has been something that's gone up significantly in that time. Also, I believe there was a, a period of high inflation in paper a couple of years ago that we, that we were discussing at the budgets.
Well, I don't know how to, I mean, I think Well, I don't know how to, I mean, I think clearly part of it is an inflationary thing. I mean, everything's sort of been inflated.
You see, you seem to be highlighting the, the areas that have had greatest inflationary impact. I'm just saying, I tend to remember.
That you think maybe that would be one to.
Paper was something significant, it may not be, I don't know.
Be nice to think that as we spend more on technology, our paper budget goes down, but it doesn't always work that way, yeah.
I think also highlighting, well, here again, I'm growing the list, um, highlighting those things that remain stable.
Well, I think that the answer is to try to explain, you know, for people who are saying, how can this be? How, how does a budget cha- grow so, so great, so greatly?
But if we could even indicate sixty-eight percent of our budget stays in our, less than one percent, changes less than one percent. These are, the, the other, the other thirty-two percent is what's influencing the change.
One little caveat, I have already, I feel, through my questions, been getting Blaine and Carmen spinning around doing this. So, I mean, I'm a little cautious about having, I mean, Blaine could go back over ten years and find out what's remained stable, but we have to make sure that that's a good use of his time for, for some of the requests that are out there. I mean, I don't mean to nix your idea, but it's on the list, we'll, we'll see. Stacy?
Joanne, I don't know if textbooks comes under.
Supplies or?
Okay, because I know, I did see, uh, again, in the Foster's, that there was, uh, gonna be a study on how come college textbooks cost so much money. And that may be, I don't know what our student textbooks cost, but I imagine that, you know, for students, they're probably quite expensive.
Um, I guess the way, the way I would tackle this, not knowing anything about the organization, would be I'd just look at the line items and just plot them out and see which ones have the greatest percentage increase. How, how long have you been here, Blaine? More than five, ten years, right?
Six years.
Six years, that's it? Okay. So I would assume that you, you would have access to your six years of data fairly comfortably in whatever format you keep it. So that's another way.
Well, that's actually, I think, what Howard and I did and then with Blaine. I mean, in a sense, that first list was us kind of pointing to here where you're gonna see, these are some things. I mean, like health insurance has gone up.
That's huge.
Two hundred and something percent.
Right.
So we know that, you know, that, um.
But, you know, if it's, if it's a small item that goes up two hundred percent, it doesn't make a difference.
Right.
Health insurance is not a small.
But health insurance is not a small, right.
I agree.
Yeah, it's gone up millions, so, okay. But, yeah, David?
Well, another plug for paper, over that ten years, we've also changed from sort of a photocopying model of distributing materials to purchase textbook model and many of the things. So that, it's not just the inflation rate of the paper, but I think that the.
Use practices.
The use practices have changed in a more expensive way.
Interesting, yeah.
Well, another note on that is, um, I know that a couple of years ago, when you switched to recycle paper, that does cost more. Um, it's an important thing to do, but it does cost more for the district, so.
So is there a green consensus that that would be?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we're gonna move on to, to academic development and we're going to, unfortunately, we have, Laura Rogers was going to be here this evening, but I think, um, the weather has kept her at home busy doing things that are probably less desirable than board meetings. So we'll move on to item B. Howard, are we gonna do the curriculum sequence adjustment? Do you want to say anything about that? Are we gonna also wait?
Well, what I can say is, I, I believe you have received a letter from Tom Zanowski. It's in response to your question, where do things stand regarding, um, um, the curriculum cycle. There's been a proposal to make some adjustments, primarily to focus more on, um, reading, writing and math over the next several years. And it was a concern, I believe, about what about the technology program and consumer science. And you've, you've got a report here saying that the teachers have been meeting actually on their own largely for the last year or two. They've, by and large, updated a lot of their curriculum, reviewing that right now and Tom plans to meet with them in the future and just keep focused on that, but that shouldn't be a reason not to go forward with, um, more energy toward math and, and language arts.
David?
Just another clarification term, because I always get confused on these. When you say technology, you're talking about technology education, which is what most people think of as shop. This is not computers and.
That's right.
That kind of technology.
That's right.
So this is shop and home ec.
Right.
In fifty-sixty speak.
Right.
Okay, thank you. And we, are there any operations management senses?
I just have one real quick item. Um, I'm trying to re-jumpstart our joint loss management committee and.
Your what committee?
Joint loss management committee, also known as a safety committee. And I'd like to invite, invite the board to, um, possibly appoint a board member to participate in that process, attend some of our meetings and be on our email list.
Do you wanna, do you want someone before the elections? Is this, will the meeting be starting soon or can you wait till after?
We have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday and then we plan to meet monthly thereafter, so probably.
When do your meetings mu- when do your, when does your group meet?
We don't have a set date yet.
But I mean, is it during the day or the evening?
Uh, it'll be probably around three-thirty in the afternoon.
Okay.
So I would probably suggest wait until after the elections and then.
Okay.
And see if there's one of you that would like to participate.
Okay, thank you, Blaine. All right, superintendent's report and recommendations. Howard?
Well, again, Laura Rogers was gonna be speaking primarily tonight on the issue of our efforts to, um, move forward with the idea of extended learning opportunities for our students. Again, she's not gonna be able to be here tonight, but she will be joining us on the fifth of, of March. And at that time, she'll be back on both items that are being, in a sense, moved forward. Um, what I can tell you is that we, um, are not sitting on our hands with, with, with this idea. We think that it has promise. We, um, as a, as a high school are participating, largely observing for schools that have been part of a grant to try and, um, implement this within their schools and to learn what's worked and what hasn't worked and take that to our, obviously, our full advantage. But, but meanwhile, we have students that are now, um, enrolled in some out-of-school and after-school activities that could lead to, um, earning high school credit. That I don't think would be, I, I don't think it's fair to say that started this year. I think it's been going on for some time. We just probably wanted to be, um, thinking that we could expand on that over time and, and, and I would think, actually promote it. It looks to me as if our interest now would be to start, uh, with the idea that this option would be available to, for students to earn elective credit, um, thinking that we, we wanna start, um, slowly and carefully. In other words, not to say that a student could, um, earn a, a science or math credit by extended learning opportunities, though in time that could happen, but rather other electives, um, that are required for graduation. And again, Laura will talk more about that, um, when, when she comes in, um, for a presentation in March. We, we, um, have faculty members that are, um, certainly o- open-minded and, 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 and find this to be a promising idea. I, I think that there may be a few people who have the impression that we are resistant to the idea. That is, is inaccurate, that, that's, that's very inaccurate. We are, um, again, seeing this as a promising idea. And I, I, I wanna say, my impression is that the school has been providing this op- opportunity, um, for some time. It's just, I, I don't think it's, it's been articulated or developed the way that it can be. So we see promise in this idea and, um, we'll be coming to you probably later this spring with a sample board policy for you to consider. Again, this is a, is a new option, um, that has been supported by the state school board and the, the governor. And it's, it's, it's elective and what we wanna do is, um, come to you with a recommendation that we, in fact, provide this as, as, as an option for our students. So you'll see something probably in the next month or so regarding actually a draft of a policy that is coming from another district in New Hampshire that has given a lot of thought to this whole idea.
Thank you. David?
Um, I would like just to underscore that, um, this is something that we've thought about for a while and in fact, the, the mere, the existence of the guidance outreach counselor is a paid position, administrative position that was added this school year, um, shows that we, um, we're willing to put our money where our mouth is and, uh, have a dedicated administrator, a new administrative position, um, specifically to try and make this program happen. As I understand it from the reading through what you said, I mean, that's in, in some sense, exceptional, that most schools don't have a person dedicated to that program.
Right.
So it does show a really strong commitment at our high school and the district with that, that kind of thing, so, thank you very much.
Do you have anything else?
I don't. Well, you know, I'm sorry, I do.
Yeah, I thought you did.
I do. I want to, uh, thank you. I wanted to just mention, um, that today was our fourth day of cancellation due to, um, inclement weather. And our calendar is built with, I believe, five days for, um, for cancellations. And who knows, um, but there's a possibility that we're going to reach, um, more than five cancellations this year. We still have at least another month of winter. And there are any number of things that we can do, um, if that happens, in terms of making up lost instructional days. One of them, um, obviously, is simply to just extend the school year out by that number of days. Just go further into June. Another would be to look at, um, having school held on a vacation period such as the April vacation. Take some of those days. Another option would be, um, to hold school on Saturdays. We did that, I believe, last year for the senior class one day and honestly, it was very successful. Many students showed up, had a, a, a great day of community service and, uh, I, I think it was, it was absolutely educational and I think people were very impressed by our students and it was just a great day. So those are just three of many options. I, I have contacted, um, uh, the Teachers Guild, asking them for any suggestions and ideas they may have as to how we might make up days if we need to and I look forward to hearing from them. Um, I've, I'll be talking about this, um, also with our administrators in the very near future, asking them what they think and perhaps they won't talk about it with their faculty. So we'll, we'll be looking for, for ideas, but we want to kind of have a plan in place and I, I would bring that back to you once we have a recommendation, so that if it does happen, we are sitting here scrambling. We've, we've got a plan, we've explained it. All, all the ideas I brought up, by the way, that have got, um, concerns attached to them and they're, none of them are ideal. Every one of them, I, I, I can see people saying, but here's a problem with that one and here's a problem with that one and, and they're legitimate concerns. I, I don't see yet a, um, a plan that is, is gonna make everybody feel, well, this is perfect. But we'll do our best. So I just want you to be aware of it, we're thinking about it and, um, and, you know, let's hope there, if there's more snow, that it comes sometime between, uh, late Friday and, um, and Sunday and we're all set.
All bets are off this year. Okay, thank you. So under agenda planning, I have, we have two items coming forward from tonight's meeting, the guidance outreach counselor and, um, more information on extended learning opportunities from Laura Rogers. I also have down here, feedback goal, Jo, is that something?
Yes.
Okay, do you think you'd be ready, you and Tom for the next meeting?
Yes.
Uh, we also discussed having an item to dis- to talk about the timeline of the long-range planning, planning committee's work and the budget, trying to re-align those more carefully. Does that seem an appropriate time for next? David?
I forgot to mention in the, under committee reports that the long-range planning committee met. I know there was some.
They met on Monday, right.
I was spacing over.
Do you wanna?
Um, and I brought that up with the committee and they, um, they are happy to meet with that. What I suggested with them is that, um, we set up sometime after they do their report, because they're sort of focused on that, that product projection, with some administrators, maybe the facilities committee and the long-range planning committee, um, you know, April-ish or May and sort of have the committee talk with the people who use their data and see if there's a better way, you know, they can address some of the concerns with it. So maybe what I can suggest is we just sort of put that off until the board reforms, we have the facilities committee in place and just delegate to them.
Okay.
That task.
So it doesn't need to be done at the board level?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, and we can, you know, like I said, deal with it in a month and.
Okay. Um, I also have down, um, we talked at an earlier meeting about just codifying the, the class guideline, the corridor for staffing. Will we be receiving a report from Laura at some point regarding the NEASK?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that's, that, again, may not be next time, but that's here as a future.
You also should be looking for a report from Tom Zanowski regarding the, uh, the kneecap.
All right.
All right.
Test results for grades, I think, three, third, three, grade three through eight.
Okay.
And then later this year, I think, I believe you'll have something for grade, I think it's grade eleven.
Okay, and I also have down whether to join the New Hampshire School Board Association lawsuit regarding the New Hampshire retirement system. Kim?
We also had talked about, um, doing a recap of budget season.
Yep.
Right.
While it was fresh on everyone's minds.
Right. So that probably, Blaine?
I, I have on my desk a, um, a proposal from a company regarding energy conservation initiatives that I'd also like to bring forward to the board in March, if possible.
Um, does it matter to you if it's at the first meeting or the second meeting in March?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm just looking, that first meeting in March, I mean, it probably makes sense to have the budget process, processing the process discussion before the board is different, so. So that might be at the next meeting, okay?
That'd be like an exit interview, the budget exit interview.
Yeah, energy conservation, so we'll do that, okay.
Jo? Probably the first one in April, the, um, athletic director, to give us a summary of the winter sports season. I think we've kind of tried to make that a standard process every season.
Joanne?
Yes.
Also, I think that, um, on the second meeting of March, that may be the nineteenth, I'm not sure. I believe that's when we will be, um, doing the nomination and election of teachers.
Okay.
We will have the vote on the budget by the, on the eleventh. I think that we need to do that most immediately thereafter.
Okay, and probably at the next meeting, um, in non-public, we'll, we'll finalize superintendent evaluation, so. Okay, wow.
Did you, the workshop on advertising at some point?
Oh, I put that, well, I have two things. Early, the, coming back to the community forums and the special meeting to discuss the values and policies. Okay, Howard?
The other thing is that, um, I believe, I haven't got with him, but I believe that our new procedures are that any central office administrator would meet with the school board before, um, finalizing employment. Isn't that correct? Didn't we agree to that? And so we will have a special education director, hopefully, recommendation for you in the next, I would hope, certainly within the next month. So some, one of these meetings soon, depending on where we are with the, um, finalizing interviews and, and, um, we would need to add that to a meeting. That could take some time as well.
I'm sorry, so you said to, to meet, have an interview? School board interview, okay.
I think the board, principal office administrators.
Would that probably be a special meeting?
Well, it, um, it, that might be what you want to do.
Unless you wanna wait till June, it sounds, no.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so, um, moving on to closing actions, our next school board meeting is really March fifth? It's March fifth, March fifth and the nineteenth. Special activities, again, the, there's a candidates forum on February nineteenth and there's another one on the twentieth. Seven PM in both cases, one, the nineteenth is here at the high school. And the twentieth is at, in, in the Durham Town Council Bill, um, chambers. March eleventh is voting day and we hope people will read and become informed about the warrant, school warrant articles and the budget and, um, go out and let their voices be heard. Comments by visitors?
Also, the three-twenty-sixth retreat?
Oh, March twenty-sixth, um, retreat for new orientation, orientation for the board, board orientation, okay, thank you. Any comments by visitors this evening? Any comments by visitors this evening? No comments by visitors? Then is there a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A32A and C?
Some moved.
Moved by Kimberly?
Second.
Seconded by Joe, and by roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, the board is now in non-public session.